I remember seeing something like that before. It was quirky. We anticipate a red.
I messed up all your shit. What, misspelled my name?
No, but don't you.
That's okay. No problem.
That's just. The shock out of my habit.
No problem, Ron.
I think you're better. I guess. You there? Yeah, we're spending that way. It's not very well. He's doing better than I expected. He's taking the pregnancy on. That's impressive. Do what?
So. You might do it. And here we survive. Sometime. We will continue. Yes.
Yes.
That's all that is on me.
Okay, so they, we have no other triggers. Okay.
The mayor could work in the day where they can.
Jeff, how are you?
You can work in your own.
That's true.
Information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon's not here since nothing happened. I haven't seen her this afternoon. You all there? The reason is we would have to go to. So unfortunately. Obviously. He said he would not give them. It goes to the good fortune. They make a little.
Scouts go on the market.
What they've done.
109 is dealing with civic state council.
Civic city?
Yeah, I just had to listen.
Keep them, Sarah.
We'll have a scout line.
We don't keep.
She's coming. She's gonna be sitting.
I'm trying to travel for a break. You don't say no.
This is the last thing I see.
She was, in my mind, this is a violation to issue.
Managed to put that on.
I knew it was the only person. That's why.
And they didn't. I don't keep going again.
The American, American knows. They didn't seem to matter. Shouldn't have come to us. Should have only been two.
Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and call to order the March 20 regular meeting of the Prospect City Council. First order of business is approval of the minutes which have been distributed. Are there any comments, corrections?
I know if they adopt it as written.
Okay. Moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes approved. Comments from citizens? No one has signed up to make comments at the outset of the meeting. But if somebody wants to raise their hand, I'll recognize you. Okay. The mayor's report. So I want to welcome everyone this evening. Perhaps especially the scouts who are here from Troop 109, from St. Francis Church. A number of parents, I think, are in attendance also, so we're real pleased that you all are here. I was a Boy Scout a few years ago in Troop 1 in Crescent Hill, and I remember Troop 109 well and had a lot of friends who were in Scouts there, so keep up the good work. And Brittany Nagel is also here, I think, with, okay, then, as I said, a number of other parents, so welcome. Very much appreciate. We understand you may not be able to stay for the entire meeting, but you're welcome to stay as long as you like and leave whenever it's convenient for you. So there are a couple of items that I want to talk about. First is Little Hunting Creek Park, and for the benefit of our visitors, that's the park that's right next to City Hall, just east of City Hall. There's a new pavilion under construction there and a new playground under construction. That work is nearing completion. We anticipate that the playground will be completed in the next two to three weeks. We're waiting for the ground to dry sufficiently for the trucks to deliver the gravel that will be put down. Once the gravel's put down, the. A rubberized material will be placed over the gravel, and then the playground will be ready to go. The. Pavilion is completed, but there's some storm damage that took place with the windstorm and a large section of a tree that fell on the pavilion. But I don't believe that's going to delay the opening of the pavilion and its use. There'll be a meeting this Thursday with the contractor. Discuss the repairs of that. They have submitted the claim to their insurance company because they've not yet turned the pavilion over to the city. So on April 30th at 2:00 p.m., a production of Hamlet will take place in the new pavilion. And we hope everyone will come and enjoy that. It's the Shakespeare in the Park group that will be here to perform Hamlet. So I'll talk a little further about the wind damage on March 3rd. Trees that evening blocked six city streets. And Chief Gerard, who's here, his assistant Tony Denham, Mike Thomas, and two other officers, so a total of five officers, that evening. Took on the task of removing the trees from the streets so that there'd be access for people to come in and out and for emergency vehicles. So we appreciate Jeff, your work on that, your officer's work on it. Really appreciate that. On Saturday, Ron Kundup, our Public Works Director, came in. And he drove the city, I drove with him part of the time, and checked for damage. And within a day or so, they had repaired the street signs that were damaged and made note of what. Other damage there was, what trees might need to be, city trees that might need to be removed, not just cleared from the streets, but removed. There was one in Bridge Point, one of the city trees fell into a yard, and that's the city's responsibility to remove it, so that's been undertaken since then. Ron and his crew, Brian and Rusty, have cleared the trails in Hunting Creek Park. They've cleared the tree from the sidewalk over the dam at Putney Pond. There's an additional tree that's going to be removed from a trail near the swing by Putney Pond. So thanks again to our police and to our Public Works for their work in dealing with that, the aftermath of the windstorm. I'll give a brief report about the Investments Committee. Don Greer has agreed to chair that committee on Thursday, March 9th. Don and John Carter and I met via Zoom with Betty Rapp, who's the Vice President for Senior Institutional Portfolio Manager, is her title. Senior Institutional Portfolio Manager. She was very helpful. Talked about the state statutes that govern how we can invest our funds, and she gave us some very good advice. We're very appreciative to her. So at this point, we have $1 million of our funds in CDs, a CD yielding 3.8%. That matures on May 4th. Another $1 million is in a 26-week CD at 3.9% interest. That matures on August 3rd. And a third of $1 million is in a one-year CD at 4% and matures on February 1, 2024. The Investment Committee members are Bill Brab, Dennis Riggs, Don Gibson, and Chair Don Greer. And an Investments Committee meeting will be scheduled in the coming weeks. Our plan is to keep the council closely advised about any decisions that are made with regard to investments. We'll follow the investment policy that the council approved and obviously will comply with all state statutes. It's time to begin work on the budget for the new fiscal year, and I'll be appointing a committee to assist with that. And more will be forthcoming soon on that. So that concludes my report. Any questions from the council? Okay, financial report.
So I'm going to summarize our finances as the war at the end of February. Our cash on hand at February 28th amounted to 3.8 million. Again, we reserve 1.8 million of that for retirement responsibilities, leaving us a balance of $2 million. As the mayor mentioned, we did invest $3 million in CDs, and for the first month's worth of interest, we've earned almost $9,000. Actual revenues for the year-to-date total $3 million. Our restricted revenue road fund totals a total of $234,000. Budget items that we're looking at, as we've mentioned in the past, include the litigation fees. I think we're out of the woods as far as snow removal and salt expenses, I would hope. But now tree maintenance may become a factor depending on the bills that I get this month. Overall, with nine months of the 12 months having passed, we should have spent roughly 75% of our budget. But we are currently at 68%. And I'll take your questions.
Council, any questions for John? Thank you, John. Next item on the agenda, your commission and board reports for our station board, Lee.
The board met most recently on the 14th. We actually had two meetings in March. The Prospect's Tree City Reservification from the Arbor Day Foundation was received, and this is. Continuing from 2008, we've been a Tree City every year since 2008. And Prospect is among like 3,600 U.S. cities, small and large, participating. There's something like 155 million people. Population-wise, the United States are in some sea tree, Tree City. Our. Canopy Tree Program is going very well. We actually got six orders for canopy trees. And for. A member of the audience might not be aware, this is a program where the city costs shares. Purchase and planting of the trees with citizens who order specific trees from a choice of about six. These are selected to be larger trees, as distinguished from smaller flowering trees that we give away in October. In any case, the citizens pay $175. The Forestation Board has a professional plant contact bud to make sure that the locations are okay. And then the trees are planted professionally, provided with mulch and free guard. The planting this year is going to be around the end of March, early April, depending on weather and the nursery schedule. We had an extra meeting in March on the 7th to approve the tree planting plan for Little Hunting Creek Park, which the mayor just spoke about. And there's actually 10 trees going to go in there, nine are through the green space program. And we just kind of calm ahead. Our Berber's Andrea handled comment on their tree selections, and she was happy with what they ended up with. And we were having also one moral tree, Johnson tree tree, but before Red Bud, three dogwoods, two tulip poplar, and a moral oak going in. And another project we're working on is a review of the ordinance which establish and govern the forest-based operations. This has gone pretty well, and our city attorney has already through what might be the final draft of that. Other things going on, the Arborists has identified three Bradford pears in the landings as potentially hazardous, and we'll be working on those. We're going to have to identify the owner and notify them. Planning of Bradford along city streets is prohibited by the Forestation Board under ordinance several years ago, so there shouldn't be any new ones going in long streets. People can still plant them in the backyard if they want to. A couple other issues going on, we had a resident gunpowder court asking to us to check pines along what might be their property line, which we think it is. After one big old pine fell down in the storm and actually hit a neighbor's car. And there's three or four others, plus some trees in adjacent city-owned land that. We're going to be looking at over the spring and see how they flower out or spring out. And another quirky thing that turned up in this work was that there are several little patches of land in Fox Harbor that have no apparent owner. If you look on lodging, it says the owner of these little strips of land is the Fox Harbor Corporation. As far as we could tell, it doesn't exist anymore. And one president told me that those were originally kept as open spaces for access to city land that's behind these houses. Certainly, long behind young power court, there's a big patch of land that belonged to the city. But. So far as what to do with these, we're fortunate from forestation board aspect right now, we don't think those trees are on this unknown land. But someday, someone will be. And today we got a call about. A tree which owners are trees, actually, the property owner of Fox Harbor Road is concerned about. And this, these trees lie between Fox Harbor Road and Fox Oak. And I was just working with Ron, and we think these trees are going to end up on the Fox Harbor Road property. We have to notify the owner. So. Andrew will look at them, and if she deems they're hazardous, which is the owner's concern, they'll have to be taken out. That concludes your report. Any questions?
Thank you, Lee. Any questions for Lee? Appreciate your work, work of the board, Lee. Thank you. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee reports.
So Mayor Linda Wardell has asked.
Have to speak up a little bit.
Linda Wardell has asked me to fill in for her. She's unavailable today. The mayor mentioned the pavilion in Little Hunting Creek Park and the playground, so I won't go over that. In the park, there has been accepted a shrubbery planning planned to go around the expanded parking area. And as Lee mentioned, the Forestation Board has approved planting of several trees in the parking area and around the playground and in the picnic area. The one thing in addition to repairing the pavilion and putting down the. The surface for the playground is that we plan to enlarge the concrete walkway that goes from the playground out past the pavilion into the grassy area out there. And take it all the way down as close as we can get it to Fox Harbor Drive, so people can have access from Fox Harbor Drive without necessarily coming into the parking lot. There are a lot of people who walk down that way, ride their buttocks down, and things of that kind of nature. We've had contractors asked to submit bids for this work, and hopefully to have that done before the summertime concert series begins. Parks and Recreation has had some programs and got some other planned events coming up. There was one on March 11th in the library. That was a great success, had a goodly number of children and parents and grandchildren, grandparents there. And apparently received a lot of comments about it. The next planned event, and there hasn't been a date yet set for this, but this is kind of an interesting event. Once spring becomes more prevalent for us, is we're going to have a tie-dye t-shirt. Program where families can come, children, adults, and bring a t-shirt, and we will have ties available that you can do a tie-dye t-shirt for your kids. It will be an outdoor event, not an indoor event, and it will be in the grassy area outside, so it weather-dependent on that one. There are two spring wildflower walks scheduled right now to take place in Heritage Creek Park. One will be at 1:00 p.m. Sunday, April 2nd. Another one will be at 1:00 p.m. Sunday, April 16th. If you haven't attended one of these and have free time to do it, you ought to do it. Wildflowers in. That area on Hunting Creek Park are just absolutely spectacular this time of year. And we have Jaclyn McGrail will be leading the group, very knowledgeable about wildflowers in Hunting Creek Park, and will be assisted by Carolyn Embry, who is also very. Expertise oriented towards that event. The mayor mentioned the Shakespeare in the Park production of Hamlet on April 30th at 2:00 p.m. in Little Hunting Creek. That will be our kickoff of concert series and other events in the pavilion. We are, the mayor has appointed John Evans to be a chair of coming up with a list of programs. And the goal is to have at least one concert play activity in the pavilion each month of the summer and probably going into the fall. We have a meeting this Thursday to finalize a couple other concerts, and then we will be announcing those to the public as soon as we get a full list of those for the summertime. Also talking about doing additional, more casual ones, kind of like the tie-dye thing available. Won't be able to do that in the pavilion because we don't want permanent tie-dye in the pavilion, but it'll be available for you anyway. There has been a lot of discussion about a Putney Pond Boardwalk project. And that is a proposal to build a boardwalk that would connect City Hall with the landings, and it would be along this side of 42, going through and alongside of Putney Pond. There's been a design of it. It's been submitted to the Kentucky Heritage Land Conservation Fund Board for their approval because they have a conservation easement, which they've granted to us. But we have to get approval before we can do anything in Putney Pond. And they have a meeting in April. You'll find out what their decision is on that. And then discuss whether and how much construction of that project would cost us and see if we can go forward with it. The plans are pretty exciting and would really open up some areas for a lot of people who haven't been able to hike back in there, to walk through there and see the pond and the birds and things of that kind of nature. It's kind of exciting. Mayor, that's all that I have.
Thank you, David.
Tom, unless anybody has any question.
Any questions from the council? Okay, thank you.
Comment to add?
Yep.
One of the events that I would like to see us do this year is an amateur night. So Bob Jacob can get up and do his act. One of the acts that I'm thinking about trying to put together, if I can get Frank to participate, is to get five or six guys dressed in sailor suits. To get up and sing "There Is Nothing Like a Dame," that kind of thing. Oh, you don't need, it would be good. It would be good. I just wanted to throw that in, David. So it won't just be like the local orchestra that I don't have on board at this point, or the Oldham County Community Band, which I have gotten in communication with. So be a variety of kinds of events that we will try to do throughout the warm months of the year.
Thanks, John. Any other comments or questions? If not, Chief, I think you're next up. Microphone. Probably need to step up to get the microphones from there.
Sorry.
So the microphone is not for our benefit in this room. It's for the benefit of the people who are participating remotely.
Okay, slow month for us, which is a good thing. With regard to some of the reports for the month, we had an internet fraud report, but fortunately, it turned out that there was no financial loss involved. Someone attempted to open up a couple of accounts elsewhere. However, it was a. A bank caught it in advance. Nothing got opened, so it was just a reporting process for us. Nobody was out any money, as it turned out. The one felony report we had, it was a theft from a construction site over in the Breakers. The same builder experienced a, another theft at a different site. So chances are somebody knew that he was building in two different locations and took advantage of that situation. Let's see, just a few of the other reports. One of the thefts from Kroger, it turned out that actually someone left a wallet in the cart and then went back for it, and it was missing. So it was probably neglect on the owner's part and just went back too late, and it was already gone. The other one, the theft from a vehicle, that happened at the Kentucky Latin School, where someone actually broke the window out and then took some belongings inside. That's a rarity for here. Usually, it's just unlocked cars, but in that particular one. They didn't have cameras up then. They do now. After that theft, the Latin School put up cameras out there, and so they'll capture anything. Because that actually happened once about two years ago at the same location where someone broke into the car. On the same day, they broke in down to church, you know, further down the metro jurisdiction, and they did it on the same day, three miles from here. So. And a month or so ago, I reported that we had two vehicles stolen from a garage same night. Both of those cars have now been recovered. They were both recovered down in the city about three weeks apart. And. Smelling of weed when they were recovered, so. That's it.
Any questions for the chief?
Pretty quiet. Not much going on.
Absolutely right.
Yeah.
That's a good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? Now we'll move to new business, application from Gustavo's Mexican group. Building plan regarding the appearance of their proposed building. I believe we've got Mr. Johnson, Mr. Gedney are here. You can just step up.
My name is Joshua Gedney. I'm an architect with Encompass, deep design and development range. We're acting as the architect of record for Gustavo's for his new project here on 42. And this is what Johnson, he's the general contractor that's been hired for that project.
Wait for it to go. Where there's some.
Should we go ahead and start sharing each of them?
Do you have the ordinance that you want to read, start reading for?
No, it's just approval of your building plan. And the variance request, and so I think there's my motion.
Have I, excuse me.
Sir.
This is, this is an ordinance issue. Is that correct?
It's the application for approval of the building.
Has, has there been an application for permanent, building permit?
No, sir, there is not.
Which is, in my understanding.
He's replying to your question.
Oh. No, sir, we have not submitted the plan because if the variance request for the materials that we've submitted today is not approved, we actually have to redesign the plan for other materials. So we felt like we, if we submitted and then had to redesign, there would be more time and cost involved. So we wanted to approach you with the variance. So we wanted to approach you with the variance request for the use of stucco as an exterior material on the building first.
I understand that, but. The permit process, as I understand it, is the, the application for a permit, building permit, goes through the code enforcement officer and soon the mayor. And then it's, if that is denied for some reason, which it would be because it's a violation of our ordinances. Then it's referred to the code enforcement board. And there, they adjudicate that particular thing. At that point, it comes to the council. And right now, I think we're going backwards. I mean, if no permit has been applied, if an application for permit hasn't been submitted. And I think we're, you know, we're at the wrong end of this thing.
Okay, I think that's a point of order. I'll rule that the application can go forward this evening. That's, that may be my ruling. Go ahead with your presentation.
Yes, sir. The materials that you have in front of you are an illustration of the building exterior. That was provided to Louisville Metro and to the city council as part of the original district development plan process. And as you can see on the images, the primary material for the project is stucco. And that is at the request of the owner Gustavo, this will be his first ground up project. Where he's constructed it from scratch. And he has a desire to establish a, an aesthetic and a specific look for this project. That would be fitting with the southwest nature of his restaurant. And so to that end, we have forms and shapes that don't lend themselves to the use of stone and brick. And so what we're requesting is that stucco would be approved as a building material for this project. I think that you also, Mr. Carter, do they also have that mood board or is that just in your packet, sir?
Yes, sir.
That's okay. Could use at least one more.
That is the, we call those a mood board or an aesthetic board. And that was provided by the interior designer to give you a feel for the, the quality and the imagery. That'll be about inside the restaurant, so that you could understand why we're also looking for permission to use stucco. So that we can carry that aesthetic to the exterior of the building.
So the application's been made, these materials have been available to council members for over a week. And, and the specific materials were distributed on Wednesday of this past week. Representatives of Gustavo's were present in City Hall on Friday. To meet with any council members who were interested and wanted to avail themselves the opportunity to understand Gustavo's position regarding this further. So there's, there's been a good amount of work that's gone into this already by the gentlemen who are here this evening. But also by council members who've looked into this. So I'll, I will ask if there is a motion by council member to approve the application.
I'd like to speak first, I want to speak after you.
I'd rather get a motion on the floor, but.
So, one of the concerns I have is that this is not in compliance with our, our code. And that's why you've come for variance.
Yes, sir.
But the variance that you're asking us to do is going to be in a very prominent location on 42 coming into Prospect. And all of the other construction material that we have in Prospect is brick. And in fact, I wasn't here when this happened, but I have been told that the very queen wanted it, their building to be different than the brick that it is now. And we said no. And that McDonald's wanted to have a typical McDonald's look. And we said no, it has to be brick. And if you look at all the other buildings that we have in Prospect, Kroger's, the shopping center right across the street from us, they're all brick. There is a real possibility that that shopping center is going to change hands and maybe redeveloped. And if we allow stucco on 42, that sets a prospect, sets a principle that other buildings could be changed. And if that shopping center is not going to be brick, then we're going to have a mixture of architecture throughout all of Prospect. I personally like the aesthetics that we have of low key buildings in our community. And I'm going to vote against the variance for those reasons.
We can't vote against it because there hasn't been a motion yet.
I understand that, I'm just telling you at this point, my intentions are.
Before we have any further discussion, is there a motion to approve this application? By a council member? Anyone? I pray your application fails for the lack of motion, so we'll go to the next step, we'll work with you to, to try to assist you all in moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
I have a thought. As I look at this photograph. I'm told by you guys that this is stucco. What if it were brick? But it were painted?
I think one of the things we talked about.
Would it look just like this?
No, sir, those forms don't lend themselves exactly to brick. But I, I believe that based on the ordinance, that only certain colors are exactly within the, the acceptable range also for the city. And so what we were really asking is, is it truly the intent and purpose of the ordinance? To maintain a beige backdrop for all of the city? Or is it appropriate for the city council to at times say, when we have a, you know, traditionally, things like wood siding, vinyl siding. Ephes, which is an artificial stucco, are used by builders to save costs, to put things up quickly. And to move on and make money. And our hope was that when you have an owner who wants to invest in the community, to make something unique, that it would be appropriate to say, we can as a, as a council, allow variation within the theme. And have a, a piece that could be a potential art piece against the backdrop of the other buildings. Without saying every building, now that we've allowed one, that all buildings have to be that way. And the pavilion is an example, you know, cities, wood shakes aren't an exact item that's in the, the ordinance. But it's an appropriate application for that, for that location, for that building. And so that was really at the heart of what we are requesting is that without a threat that everyone now has the right to paint their building purple. That it's okay for there to be variation within the city of Prospect, when you have an owner that's willing to, to invest funds for not just a somewhat nice building, but for an excellent building. And so our request was really just for you to work with us and allow that material as a primary building exterior. So that some of the forms and the shapes of the southwest that he would like to convey as part of his facade could be used. And also just to address one other quick question, you said in a prominent location. Yes and no, it's such a narrow lot. And because of the setback requirements, because of the 42 corridor, it has to sit back quite a ways. And we have heavy landscaping each side of the property because of the adjacent land uses. So the average driver is only going to see a very narrow facade, probably about as wide as this room for a couple of seconds. And the whole depth of the lot won't be available for view unless you turn in. So we don't feel that we're, you know, putting something garish. I think at one of our meetings, someone mentioned Dixie Highway, that we're putting something like that, where you have just a lot of odd things that are open for view, that we have more of a set piece with landscaping. That would be setback from the road and be an attractive element for Gustavo's to present to the community as a unique feel for his construction.
I'd like to ask the mayor what motion he was seeking.
Well, I'm seeking, I was seeking a motion to approve their application, to permit this design to move forward. But we don't have a motion, I'm not sure we would get a second.
Well, we could find out, but. Approve their application, I thought that the first step in this, Mr. Mayor, was the question of whether we grant a variance from our existing ordinance. Is that not fair?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
On the design.
Would the motion then be a motion to grant a variance for purposes of?
This design.
This design.
Yes.
I so moved.
All right, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, is there further discussion?
I have just one crazy thing that occurred to me while we were talking about what's a lot along those 42. In the late seventies, Prospect City Hall was bright blue with purple shirts. And we, that was our city hall for about three years.
You're not suggesting we go back to that?
No, no, I don't, I don't. Still not, so.
Further discussion? I think much, yes, sir.
I just want to say, I'm very favorably disposed toward Gustavo's. Like the restaurant, Gustavo's been an excellent citizen. I would like to see us work something out, so this can get going. On the other hand, I, I know that the first concern I had when I looked at it was, is that going to fit? And we have citizen input that doesn't like the, the southwest design. And I couldn't be here on Friday, because I didn't have any input in at the time, and I had to be in Lafayette and begin on business for the day. I did come in, I looked at everything available to us here at City Hall. But I guess where I would hope we come out tonight is, let's sit down again, we can get more people there. And see if we can't come up with something that, that will work. Because I would love for y'all to be able to go in and have, have the building here. But I see my primary obligation is looking out for all the residents of Prospect, and I know there's concern about it. How much, I don't know exactly, we can't put everything up to a referendum. But I do, I do know from multiple neighborhoods, we have some, some pretty strong concern voiced. And I'd like to know more about how emphatic the objection is, and understand why the stucco exterior is needed, before I cast a final vote.
Further discussion?
Yeah, the, the, it is a constructive way to move forward. Put together an Anaheim Architectural Review Committee of some citizens. And, and work, work with these gentlemen and Mr. Gustavo to see if there's not a win-win someplace here.
I think what, what we want, and I, and I want to speak on the behalf of Gustavo, because he was here last week. Unfortunately, tonight is the one year anniversary of their opening of the Hurstborn location. So the, the Hurstborn location, which is the Old Macaroni Grill, which is coincidentally a stucco building. Is the first standalone freestanding restaurant that Gustavo's owned. Every other restaurant that he's owned, where he started out in Oldham County, has, has been in a strip center, similar to Prospect. You know, he's in Kroger out in La Grange, and he's in a strip center in Presswood. He's really excited about the project here, he has obviously, as you guys know, he has a loyal following, and they do a great job. We, I'm a Prospect resident, my business is in Prospect, so I spend a lot of time, it's kind of our home kitchen, I would say. He's really excited about having his first ground up restaurant, that he can work with designers. And, you know, every restaurant you take over, you make it a little bit better, you go in and you change the facade. They did that at Macaroni Grill, they bought a reasonably nice restaurant, was in poor shape, but went in and completely renovated it. And, and made it what, what they are, made it really kind of stand behind its brand. What he's really looking to do is to, with this restaurant, to be almost the flagship of his brand. You know, he's got property across the river, he's got property all over Louisville, that he's looking to take his brand and expand it, take the same level of service and quality and value that he has at all his restaurants out in Oldham County, kind of expand it. But what he's really hoping to do with his first kind of flagship, start from finish, or start to finish restaurant, is capture the look and feel of what he's wanting, which is authentic Mexican. In an authentic building that fits the personality of his staff inside. As you guys see, the renderings and stuff that are there on the inside, it's a California designer we're working with. They've designed some really nice high-end restaurants. Gustavo's willing and has already, for lack of better terms, paid up when it comes to design. He's reached out to the best of the best, he's hired a great architectural firm, he's hired a great design firm to help design this facility, so that it's first class. I'm a Prospect resident, I'm assuming all you guys are, we don't have a lot of restaurants right around here. At nighttime, we're very limited if we don't drive into town. So having something here that's great food, but also great quality to go to is a big deal. It's a big deal to Prospect residents, but it's a big deal to him as well. So, you know, as far as, just to know, and, and it's been touched on, you know, cutting corners for him, it's, that's not at all what it's about. It, it is a hundred percent about capturing the look and the feel of, of what they're trying to embrace. To be quite honest, he knows it, and I think all of us know it, the cheapest thing for us to do would be able to build a square box restaurant, to brick it, slap a flat roof on it, and put a Gustavo sign on it. Economically wise, and, and honestly, all his people would probably still go there. And the problem is, it doesn't build his brand, it doesn't build this flagship that he's wanting to do. And honestly, for us in Prospect, what, what we're wanting is to have that, you know? But we also want something fitting. And we drive up and down 42, there's a lot of brick. It was funny, we met with these designers from out of town, and they, they commented on that, because in California, you see a lot less brick. So they commented on that, but I did notice just the other day, running up and down, you know, the front of Southern neighborhood, there's, you know, five, six, seven houses that are stucco. You go to the Kroger building, it's brick, but they're stucco on the facade of Kroger building. So there, there are these mixes of material, when they're used in the right proportions around the city that we see every day, and that we've accepted in the past. We mentioned the pavilion that just got built, we love to see this go up, it's an awesome park, I have little kids, I plan on being down here myself. But, but somebody designed a, a really good looking wood structure with an incredible, you know, wood sheater, you know, single, shingle roof, which looks fantastic. But it's not a standing scene roof, like, you know, the other buildings in town, which is what the ordinance states that it should be. So it's, there are times where these ordinances, they leave us the liberty to, to sit before the group that's looking to build something and say, hey, their intentions are good. And we do need to just come to a common ground, and that, and that's what he wants. Where we're at now is, he's in a shopping center currently across the street, that's owned by a big box store. The big box store, they're not sitting in this room, they'll never be sitting in this room unless they want something, and then they're gone. He's out of a lease, I'm just telling you this on his behalf, because they, they would not renew his lease, because they know he's looking to do something else. So he's on a month to month right now, any given day, they could come and say, we've got somebody, we need you out, and he'd have 30 days to be out of that store. So time for him is of the essence. And I know this was passed, you know, or, or it was brought up maybe six months, a year ago even, I think these renderings, just so that it could get submitted to Louisville Metro for their process. And we're just getting it back around to get it here. But, you know, our, our thought in trying to get it through this, this round or this meeting for this month is, we have a site disturbance permit that will be issued this week. We could be breaking ground this week on the site construction. We obviously can't dig footers and pour building pads until we get the building permit pool, which we would need you guys approval for. But time is of the essence for us, and I think when we met last week, our hope was to say, hey, there's details for sure that we could flush out. You guys have a colored rendering, that looks good, but there's a lot of details that aren't flushed out on there, we're happy to do that. But design costs are terribly expensive, and any small business owner, he's one of them, has got to save in every way they can. We don't want to design it two, three times if we don't have to. So our hope in meeting last week was to say, hey, look, here's our intention. We understand that it doesn't, it doesn't work within the walls of the, the court current ordinance. But our hope is to say, hey, if you guys can incorporate some of this, that we can make that work. And then we can then go back to the drawing board, flush that plan out, and to bring it back and have it blessed by you guys, before you would stamp the plans for final approval. I think that was really kind of what we were hoping for. I think that was really kind of what we were hoping for.
And just to clarify, we're not asking for approval of the colors that you see. We're just asking for the approval to use stucco as a primary building facade material. Uh, we would be glad to work with you to try to incorporate um, you know, some stone or some brick where we can do it for, based on the forms. Um, but we are asking that we be able to use stucco as a primary facade material. And colors are available that are different and as Frank mentioned, there is a process. So the building would still need to go through that committee to review it and, and can, you know, confirm the materials and the colors. But we're asking for this variance so that we can finalize our building footings and design because uh the requirements for brick, as he mentioned, can be done with a square box and but we do have to change all the footers and our foundation work. So we would, that's what we're really asking for. And also to get a sense for your all's commitment to allow for variation within the district, whether or not that's possible.
So, so.
Uh, no, really, not.
Can you just hold up a picture so we have an idea?
Yeah. You're, I have to pass that around.
And you've all seen this picture before.
We've all had the opportunity to see it, that's true. Well, I tell, I tell you what, ma'am, we're, we're delighted you're here, we have a, a time for citizen comments. This is, this is really not that time that's earlier, so we appreciate your comments, but we need, we'll need to move forward.
So, so Mayor, I think Don and Sarah have made a suggestion. I think we'll try to follow up on that. If we can come up with a compromise, you can always call a special meeting and we can, you know, we act on this pretty quickly.
We, we can call a special meeting, we've got a motion and a second uh at present. And if, if there's uh, that, that, I can count votes, I don't know that you've got the votes, but uh, but we do have a motion and a second. Uh, I think it's important to reiterate what's been said before. There's quite a bit of affection and loyalty to Gustavo and appreciation for him and for his restaurant. So I don't think any of the comments this evening, in, or any way intended, is any sort of slight toward him. But, and we understand the business realities of this. But as things stand, we've got a motion, a second, is there further discussion on the motion?
I just want, I just want to state that we add to, to uh Mayor Farnesley's point. Um, I think there, we're, we're wrestling with the blend between the look and feel, what the city has kind of set as a baseline versus obviously um what we will experience in a more stucco building, even i- even in a limited purview. So I think there's a balance we can reach at some point in time. So I respect um, huge advocate of Gustavos, obviously, and to your point, limited restaurant options in the city of Prospect. And I also applaud the fact that he wants to venture out and this, make this a flagship. So we're honored to, to have him do such and want to do it in Prospect as well. So we, we heard you, we absolutely um, you know, once again align. But we also, to Don's point, kind of have to understand what the concerns are of the citizens as well as we move forward because it's a little bit larger than just, you know, kind of our purviews. We have to take into account what the city's considering as well. So, but thank you very much for your time and I appreciate all of that additional information.
Mr. Mayor, uh, the reason that I made the motion was if I got a second, which I did, we could have the discussion that we just had because absent a motion, you really can't do that. I think the discussion has been very valuable. And having had that, I would like to withdraw my motion.
Okay, a second, do you want to withdraw your second?
Do I have a choice?
Yes, you have a choice.
Yes, I, I guess I will withdraw.
So that, there is no motion on the floor. I think we've all got a sense of the meeting. And what uh, what I would encourage you to do is contact me tomorrow and we'll uh work with you. And when we, when you're available, hopefully we'll have people show up to talk with you and, and have this discussion. But we appreciate you being here, excellent presentation, thank you for your presentation. Especially like the point about supplement. Those are, those are some big houses and they're not brick, so it's a.
Are they restaurants?
Right.
It was a very nice point, very well stated. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a pretty perfunctory, I think, uh, matter, which is the, uh, well, I'll let John speak to this if you would.
Uh, it's a resolution three, twenty twenty-three, a resolution adopting Kentucky Public Employees Deferred Compensation Authority jointure agreement, which I had attached to your packet. Um, as some of you may know or may not know, since you're not uh full-time employees, uh, so the city has for many years offered to its employees the ability to take pre-tax money invested in four fifty-seven B and four oh one K type plans. Uh, the plan itself is managed through the Kentucky Deferred Compensation Group. The council has previously in two thousand eight uh basically adopted a similar resolution that basically is authorizing the city to continue its relationship and giving the authority to KDC to make these investments on behalf of the employees. It is a voluntary thing, so those employees who participate have decided so on their own.
This is separate in part from the pension that's available to our employees uh that, that our employees participate in by virtue of being employees. This is uh a, a uh plan that they can participate in, which as I understand it is similar to their Roth IRA. These are after-tax dollars that are taken out of the paycheck. I think two of our employees are all a bit of opted into this. But this, I think this is akin to a resolution offering this to open a bank account. This is pretty uh standard stuff and this is uh an updated version of the agreement we got that uh from the previous one that we've been asked to consider.
Mayor, could I ask a couple of questions about that?
Certainly.
Because I haven't been involved in the government and the employees, this is just a couple of questions. This, the city doesn't contribute any funds to this, this is solely the employment.
That's correct.
Okay, so this has no budgetary impact whatsoever in the city.
That's correct.
That's wonderful.
But what is the, was it four fifty-seven?
It's a, it's a plan.
Set plan section.
It's a, it's created by state statute, I believe, Don, is that right?
It's a term of revenue code.
Like four oh three B or four oh one K, okay.
But four oh one K is, is uh, is not after tax, after tax.
That's right.
It's pre-tax.
It's pre-tax.
Yeah, I'm just saying it's akin to those sections, this type of plan.
Yeah, this is not like Roth.
Well, I thought this was, and I may be mistaken, but it was my understanding that this is after tax. Uh, it's not.
Pre-tax.
Pre-tax, okay, so it's.
It's a very good deal for employees.
Yeah, my mistake.
And we're, we're just continuing a relationship, is that right?
Correct.
Do we pay, what, do we pay?
We pay nothing.
Okay.
The city pays up.
Is there a motion to uh approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second, further discussion? Uh, we'll do a, a roll call, Frank.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Don? Davis?
Yes.
Yes.
The other Don?
Yes.
Okay, it's appearing six to zero with my apologies to David. Um, so that's the last item on the uh agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I can call in favor? Uh, we are adjourned.